On May 26th, and this Carroll City Council meeting will come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, at the roll call show, council members are present. And first up is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes of the May 11th meeting, approval of bills and claims, new five-day Class C liquor license, including outdoor service to Rockin' Ride Carroll Cycle Center June 6th, renewal of Class C beer permit with Sunday sales to Casey's General Store number 3025, renewal of Class B beer permit, including wine coolers with Sunday sales for Pizza Hut, renewal of Class C beer permit with Sunday sales, Casey General Store number 302, renewal of Class C beer permit with Sunday sales to Dries Oil Company, Inc., and the appointment of summer base to the Parks Recreation and Cultural Advisory Board, a three-year term to expire 5/31/18.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Jensen?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Motion is approved.
All right, do I have any oral requests or communications from members of the audience tonight on matters that are not already on the agenda? Then, hearing none, I'm gonna take us out of order just a little bit. I'm gonna bring our final report relating to the South Side Park special use request up front. We've got a guest here this evening to present on this. And Gerald, if you just wanna cue us up, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've received the request from Mr. Napple, who will be stepping forward to the mic about the privilege or the request to be able to serve alcoholic beverages for a fundraiser on June 20th, 2015. So, Don?
Does everybody have that letter?
Yes, we do.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just bypass this little idea here first? And just wanna make a recommendation to our police chief. You know, in the last few weeks, we've had two very notable people retire in the nation in Iowa. Dave Letterman, Kevin Cooney. And you know, they only had 33 years. Jeff, you had 34. And I think that the past police officers and the new officers and everybody should make a top-10 list for June 8th. I just challenge those guys to give them the top-10 list. But, chief, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Okay. We're gonna have a beanbag tournament. Hy-Vee's going to do the license and put a fence up. And the fences, and I just roughed it hundred by hundred. It probably won't be that big, but depends upon how many people we have. And I just thought I'd get the okay from you guys before Hy-Vee would apply for their license, so that they don't have the expenditure of buying an outdoor permit if you're not gonna let us use them. So, I don't know how long we'll have it. Depends upon how many teams. But we would start around 11 o'clock, and I would think we'd be done by 5:00, 6:00. We're gonna open it to the public for food or beverages, whatever they want. It's a fundraiser for the Relay for Life.
I'm assuming you got the park shelter house rented out, or?
No, we're using the, up by the open shelter house. We're not...
Okay, so not actual rental?
No, we're not even gonna bother with the closed shelter house.
Okay, but it is open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Don on this? Sounds like a great idea and a worthy cause.
Good.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, well then, with that, I would just need a motion to formally approve Don's request.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
You bet.
Appreciate it. All right. Then we will go ahead and move back up on the agenda, up underneath ordinances this evening. And that is our first ordinance, the rezoning request of Lot 1 of Outlay A of the replot of lots 4 through 21 of Block 4 of Collison's Second Addition to the City of Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa. And for this, I will be opening a public hearing at 5:20. And Gerald?
The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the applications you have before you for a zoning change in the area that is described, and they recommend to the city council approval of that zoning change. There were no objections received formally or informally, either written or unwritten, directed to me. And at the hearing, as I recall, Greg, there were none offered. You have a copy of the minutes that indicate their recommendation. For those of you that, you wanna look at the map and know, this is located on what we refer to as 30th Street. Randy, what does the county call it?
I think it's 200.
Okay.
100.
100.
100. Okay. It's directly east of the Baptist Church, along the Hart Surface roadway. And there are some houses built on the east end of this property. And the church would be located generally on the west end of this. The area for rezoning does not include where the church is located. It is a property east of that to where the current houses are located. And I think there's a person here representing the request.
Okay.
And I would add, Gerald, that this does match up with the zoning of the abiding property there at the Hart 3, and that it is in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan.
And public notice was given, and we have proof of publication.
Okay.
Greg, do you know how much land is this? I'm just curious. Maybe I missed it.
Um, I'm not sure that acre or five. Yeah, 533 feet long by 160.
Actually, 660 feet long, 666 feet long, which will all be rezoned. But the church is retaining ownership of 133 feet, and we plan to sell it. He agreed, 533 feet is the number.
For the record, I believe that was Mr. Hosenfeld that's...
Yeah.
Thank you.
And he represents the church.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any questions further from council on this matter? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against?
I'll speak in favor.
Okay. Any questions or additional comments from you, Matt?
Um, no, I, the church is ready to sell the property. We've seen some plans that Ryan Egeric has to build some housing there. And we're excited to see some new housing at part of town and have housing there rather than the current state property. It's been an open lot for quite a few years.
Okay. Well, good. Very good. Well, with that, then, I will look to close the public hearing then at 5:24. And I would look for a motion.
I have just one question. Are you planning on building houses on that, or apartments?
Houses.
Houses, okay.
Yeah, the zoning would allow up to a duplex on each lot there. No more.
Okay. All right, then I need a motion to pass the ordinance.
So moved.
Whoa, wait, wait, hang on. First, would we like to waive one, two, or all three readings?
A motion to introduce and waive the three readings would be the first motion, yes.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive all three readings. Jensen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then we would need a motion to...
To adopt?
Adopt the ordinance. Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Tate?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
With that, then this will move on to the next council meeting. And you will see a preliminary plaid and final plaid submitted that we are reviewing at this time.
Continue to move through the process. Thank you for coming out. Up next is resolutions, and our first resolution is the Fiscal Year 1415 Budget Amendment Number 2. And for this, I will open a public hearing at 5:25. And Laura?
Before you tonight is the actual public hearing and then resolution to approve Budget Amendment Number 2 for our fiscal year. There are two items included in this, the Grand Park Basketball Tenants Courts to increase the project after we had known more closely what the project cost was going to be, to increase that for $75,000 out of general fund money, as well as for the capital loan note refunding process that we went through back in March. At the time we did budget, we did not know we were going to be doing that. Now, we've completed that process, and we actually have the cash on hand to pay for our financial advisor and the legal fees that went along with that process. But I do not have the authority to spend the money. So tonight, that is included. The budget amendment was published, or the notice of the public hearing was published in the paper on Wednesday, May 13th, which is in accordance with Iowa code. Are there any questions on the items included in the budget amendment?
Definitely one of our shorter budget amendments.
Yes, it is.
All right. There's no additional questions from council? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against? Then I will close the public hearing at 5:27. And I would look for a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 1415 Budget Amendment Number 2.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Tate?
Yeah.
Cox?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, our second resolution is Water Supply Wells and Transmission Main Improvements 2015 and Access Easement Betty R. Scheckinger Revocable Trust. And Randy?
Okay, the first agreement that was recently approved with the Betty R. Scheckinger Revocable Trust included the concession that an easement, an access easement, would be granted to the property owner and for use by the owner and tenants of the property. That easement has now been drafted and is included in your information. It is actually, it's the entryway to the well number 18, the proposed well number 18. So it's just the upper area depicted on the site plan that you had received. At this point in time, a public hearing will be necessary, and it's recommended that that hearing be set for June 8th, next meeting.
Any additional questions for Randy as we move through this process?
When do we do the other easements? Isn't there like another easement we gotta do if we put one down from that?
Uh, there, I don't believe there is.
Do we all have any other easements?
This should wrap it up as far as what we've committed to at this point.
Okay.
Hey, Randy, the size of the easement, is it adjusted at all based on, depending on farm equipment, the size of whatnot? Does that adjust the width of it at all?
No, no. We, you purchased only a section of property that's actually the access to well 18. And what they wanna do is use that property that you purchased for access to their farming operation. So they'll use the entire width of what's purchased. And that's, actually, it's described as the south 450 feet of the lot that's purchased of that lot.
All right. Will that, will that easement in their passage through it take the farm equipment over top of our transmission lines, Randy? And do we have any concerns about weight going over them?
No.
Okay, good.
We have limited in the easement itself, that I think the draft will show that only, the only allowable loads on the easement are legal axle loads.
How are they accessing their property to be, right now? Is it through an area right where that road is now?
No, it isn't. They access it at two different locations, and both are through adjacent properties. So they actually have not been accessing that property from the road, from the public way.
From where it's currently being accessed now, or we would access it?
No, they won't be, or they haven't been.
They haven't been.
Who maintains that, then? Is it shared, or is it our responsibility?
The provisions of the easement will be that the city will maintain it for the city's use and that the tenant will maintain it for the tenant's use. So if they're, you know, worst case, they're trying to take out corn during a snow, we won't go plow it for them. They can plow it for their use. We will have to maintain it for the access to the well. And wells are checked frequently anyway, so...
Good questions. All right, motion at this point to approve a setting of public hearing on the granting of the proposed access easement for June 8th of 2015.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Tate?
Yeah.
Cox?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our third resolution is US 30 and Grant Road Intersection Improvements and Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number 1. And Randy?
Okay, the April 14, 2014 Professional Services Agreement with Snyder and Associates for our Grant Road Intersection Improvement Project included basic engineering services and some additional services that couldn't be quantified at that time without mostly a little bit more coordination with the Department of Transportation. Some of those have now been quantified, and they are detailed in an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement. The items that have, can now be defined include some additional widening of US 30 east of where it was originally planned in the project. Through discussions with the DOT, they have desired to continue the five-lane section from the east up to the Grant Road intersection. So it'll be two-way left-turn lane from the Country Club to Grant Road at the conclusion of this project. Bridge widening has been a little better defined, that more information was gathered on that structure that's out there. It is actually a DOT bridge design. So it'll be bridge widening, and that carries with it certain requirements for design work. Right-of-way services have been further discussed with the DOT. The right-of-way necessary for the project will be purchased, a portion of it, okay, will be negotiated, a portion of it by the city and a portion of it by the DOT. All of the payment for the right-of-way will be by the city. So that's, that's the only way the DOT would accept right-of-way purchasing, is if they were involved in certain parts of it. So those items have been included in the amendment number one, and then some project administration services. So I've listed, I've included for your information the fees from the current agreement, which total $82,900. The amendment number one, which totals $116,700, for a total project now, or a total design services now of $199.6. Okay, the, currently, the project, total project cost is estimated to be approximately 1.4 million, including the design fees, the right-of-way, and the construction. Funding for the project is a combination of local option sales tax, which had previously been budgeted, Traffic Safety Improvement Program, state funding, which has been awarded at $500,000. And we, there will be an application made for Urban State Traffic Engineering Program at the state level, and we'll attempt to apply for about $400,000 from that program. And then we'd anticipate that there would be tax increment financing for the balance of the project cost. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the resolution approving Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement.
Okay.
Which side of the road are they widening, or are they doing both? Because one side doesn't have much room to maneuver, the other side does. But it's, which side of the road is it popping, is it down the middle, both sides?
The plan is for predominantly widening on the south side. There, there is a little bit on the north side, right at the intersection, to establish a better turning radius in the northeast quadrant of that intersection. But otherwise, the linear widening is all to the south.
So you've got a lane, and then how much more after that are they proposing to have the proper amount that the DOT would like?
I think the DOT is holding out for a minimum of about 13 feet, we have an incur.
Perhaps where the extra lane would be?
Yes.
So an additional lane ahead for...
Randy, I have a quick question. You have the pending application sizable amount, $400,000. And then, under the schedule, project letting and substantial completion to occur in 2016, I'm assuming that's later. This may be going on in the summer into the fall, obviously, before, so we will know in plenty of time before, so we get all our ducks in a row, right, with this pending application?
With the application, yes. They have recommended we submit the application this summer. And then we'll try to get the funds designated after they become...
Oh, we have plenty of time now. Okay, thank you.
So with that additional lane and the 13 feet over there in businesses, that will, that'll affect and they'll have to move or anything?
We don't know that...
So far, you can get up to a business before you have to. I remember when, in one city I lived in that came through, there was properties, they come to you and there's a line, and there's a, you have to sell that property. Is that going to be the case here?
Well, that hasn't been determined yet for certain. It's been discussed, certainly. And, but there's no final determination on it yet.
Okay. Has there been discussion with those businesses that that may affect?
There has been some preliminary discussion with those businesses.
Through the DOT or through the city?
No. It's a division of responsibilities. So both have done a little bit of discussion.
And what feedback did you get?
None. It, no, just no, no final decision yet. Certainly, if that, if a building falls into that 13 feet, it would probably be acquired. If a building doesn't fall within that 13 feet, there's continued negotiations on it.
Okay. If there are no other questions for Randy on this matter, I would look for a motion to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Professional Services Agreement for the US 30 Grant Road Intersection Improvements.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Haley?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Seaman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right. Our fourth resolution is IPCS Wireless, Inc. Water Tower Lease Agreement. And right back to Randy.
Okay. Back in 2001, a lease agreement was entered into with the company IPCS Wireless for location of antennas and associated equipment on the water tower and property, city property adjacent to the water tower. That lease included an initial term of five years and two renewal terms of five years each. So that would expire in October of 2016. Consideration for that lease included a lump sum payment at the time, and then a graduated monthly payment up to what is currently $1,320 per month. Since the execution of that lease, IPCS Wireless has merged with a subsidiary of Sprint Nextel Corporation. And that combination, IPCS Wireless and Sprint Nextel Property Services, have requested a lease extension for their equipment on the water tower. That lease extension is included in your information as what's called the First Amendment to the current lease. And it includes some changes in notification requirements, as well as additional term lengths and adjusted compensation for that lease. The new initial term is again 60 months, beginning November 1st of 2016. And there is included two additional terms of 60 months each. So that, this amendment would expire October 30th of 2031. So then the consideration, the lease payment that's been included in the amendment is, begins at $1,500 per month for the first term, and increases 15% for each additional term, of each of the two additional terms. So unless there are any questions, I'd recommend adoption of the resolution approving this First Amendment to the Water Tower Lease Agreement with IPCS Wireless.
And then these funds just generated because they're associated with the water tower, make their way back into the water funds so that we can help pay for our water expansion, correct?
Yes.
Very good.
We've attempted to abscond those funds with Randy, we're not alone.
If, if something happens, we need the maintenance on the water tower, do any of these up there affect that?
Yes, they do. And that was a major consideration when we signed the first two lease agreements. And we do have language in those original agreements that's pretty comprehensive about their responsibilities to remove and replace their equipment during tower maintenance, and primarily painting. You know, it's, to paint around all this, the stuff that's on the top of the tower, it will be difficult.
And we're not responsible for any downtime that they might feel that they have been subjected to?
Right. No, we're not.
Same language in this?
In the, it's in the original agreement, lease agreement.
So is this Brian Potter, him?
Yes, yes. This is just an amendment to the original agreement. And only those terms that are included in the amendment change the original agreement. Otherwise, it stands as is.
Do you know what other cities get similar to the size we are, or similar to how they're using it, or game for real?
Back at the time, when we initiated these lease agreements, we did kinda check around some. There's some getting more, there's some getting less. And certainly, our attempt in this amendment was to get more, but it, it would not be accepted by IPCS Wireless. It was not accepted. So I guess the bottom line is, we either are happy with what this says, or we ask them to take their equipment off the tower. You know, that's the bottom line.
How much more are other cities getting, the same?
It varies a lot. You know, we're, in our other agreement with US Cellular, we are now getting, I think, $1,850 a month. But that was negotiated with US Cellular at the time that that agreement was renegotiated. You know, and cities, I recall from back in 2001, there were cities getting anywhere from $600 to, at the time, just under $2,000. So... So it varies. And a lot of it for these companies and discussions with them is market driven. Larger the market, the more they'll pay. So in a, in a metro area, they'll pay more for a tower location than, because there's more traffic on the tower. So it's, it's what, whatever you can get. And ours look, they actually look pretty good as far as amounts that we're getting. Could we get a little more maybe if you threaten to throw them off the tower? But is it necessary? I don't know. $1,820 a month is what US Cellular is now paying. And that, that was negotiated here a few years ago. We tacked on basically an additional $500 onto their monthly rate because they took up six spaces on the water, top of the water tower. And IPCS Wireless utilizes three. So there's a difference in their, their presence on the tower. And US Cellular agreed to that change in their amendment to the lease.
So it's just about $200,000 every five years?
Is that what it is? Okay. I had the math.
Yeah, between the two together. It's about $35,000 to $40,000 per year. Thirty, 31, 3200 per month.
All right. There's no other questions for Randy on this matter. Motion to approve the first amendment to water tower attachment option and lease agreement with IPCS Wireless Inc.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our final resolution is Street Resurfacing 2015. Randy, we're going to keep you busy.
This is a good news item. We did receive bids for the street resurfacing project on May 19. Three bids were received. The detail is attached to your memorandum, but the three bids, 10-point construction, was the low bidder at $1,132,455.61. That's almost 90, or just over $98,000 below the engineer's estimate, about 8% below. And these bids were really within about 3% of each other on a million dollar project. So it was just excellent bidding for, for the city. Based on that, the current estimated project cost is about $1.25 million. The funding had been discussed recently that will include a geo bond, local option sales tax, road use tax, stormwater utility, and then what we do have some, what would be basically balance in the capital projects, street funds. The completion date for the contract is November 13. And unless there are any questions, I'd recommend passage of the resolution awarding the contract to 10-point construction at their bid price.
Looks great. I was excited to see the bid came in under. There's been a lot of horror stories out there right now with, with all of the work that everybody's wanting to do and companies just kind of having a chance. And 10-point actually has done a lot of work for us in the past and I got a lot of good reports, I think, when we were on the rolling hills side of town. People were quite happy with their work, so it's good to see.
Good bet.
Any questions for Randy on this project? Then I would look for a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for Street Resurfacing 2015 project to 10-point construction company at their bid price of
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Seaman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, thank you. We are back into reports and first up is the appointment of interim police chief in Carroll.
I would ask you to note that the position of the captain is nurturing, not assumption. So with that, the chief will be retiring on June 8th and we are in need of having a person who can make the decisions that are normally designated to the chief. The captain has been with us since 2000 and he served during that time also as a sergeant for 14 years. And he was a patrol officer before that and he's been a captain since 19, what was it, captain? Tell me on here.
2000.
2000. So with that, I would tell you that he is the only seasoned person on our staff who has taken fire and is still employed by the city of Carroll. So I think that would be indicative of his ability to make good decisions under pressure. And I would recommend to you wholeheartedly that you appoint as interim police chief, Captain Mark Haino effective June 8th.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right, our second report. Well, thank you very much, Captain, for stepping up and taking this position, by the way.
My pleasure. It's a, a base of shoes to follow. You've just been an excellent steward of the city.
Well, and I hope the two of you might put your heads together and just maybe jot down all of this institutional knowledge before we lose you. I mean, right down to some of these parade routes that I talked to you about.
When you open the doors, I have to say it, Mark knows what I'm going to say, this is how bad it is. We have a saying that we repeat frequently, that two heads are better than one unless both heads are stupid. So you elect to be the judge, I guess.
Right, right. Well, I thought about the parade route this weekend again and I just think all those little things that you guys have been doing for over 30 years and, you know, the new guys, I'm sure they can figure their way around it, but boy, it sure does make it easy if somebody's written it down, right? So, yeah. Thank you very much. All right. Our second report is the four-wheel drive front end loader replacement. And Randy?
Okay. In August of 2012, a front end loader was purchased from Titan Machinery. Early in 2013, our personnel noticed that the transmission was shifting irregularly and the oil, transmission oil was foaming. So in discussions with Case Construction Equipment and Titan Machinery led to the replacement of the transmission in that front end loader. But the irregular transmission shifting and oil foaming continued. And Case Construction Equipment has advised that there's nothing else that they can do to remedy this transmission irregularity. But Titan Machinery in conjunction with Case Construction Equipment have now proposed to the city to replace that loader. And that loader would be replaced with a like, a new model, like loader that is, that meets the original 2012 specifications and includes installation of all the additional controls that we've put on it for the snow blower and six-way plow and that type of thing and a three-year warranty on the machine. And they have proposed to do this at a cost of $15 per net engine operating hour that's on the current machine. And based on the hours on that machine, that cost for exchange would be $21,315. So we are, we're recommending that that offer be accepted and the machine be replaced at the cost of $21,315.
Okay. Randy, we talked a little bit about this once. I finally get to use some of my knowledge in the equipment industry, as they all, because I don't have wheel loaders. So a couple of different questions that come up. You made a statement of like new. To clarify, this is a new unit?
This is a new unit.
It is the same specification as what we currently have and what we desire, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I see you have the three-year warranty listed in here. Are they still putting in, there was some discussion of a service plan? Is that still involved there?
Yes, three-year.
Okay. So for three years, the city's only potential cost would be travel time for the, for that maintenance, but the oil changes, maintenance, et cetera, will be taken care of through this contract at this amount, correct?
Regular maintenance, yes.
Right. So even a regular maintenance is going to be taken care of and we're going to have a warranty to cover it. So if we have transmission issues or anything of the like, then we're covered again, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So there a warranty on the original one?
Yes, there was. And they replaced the transmission under that warranty. But following the replacement of the transmission, they refused to take any further steps to remedy the problem.
What was the writing legality of that warranty that we had then?
I couldn't address.
You know, the standard warranties until they get it done right? Or is this clause in there or are they going beyond, above and beyond or are they going to be loading? Well, because if we, if it's a car and I have it under warranty and they don't do it, then that extends out until it's finally fixed. You don't go beyond the warranty because it was done before. Is this, I mean, $21,000 is, I understand that seems like a good number, but is, when you do something under warranty, they don't cover it and then you want to pay $21,000 more dollars? When you went into a bid and maybe that bid was only 500 less than the other, then the other would have went forward and done it? It is, have we done the due diligence of what that warranty was and were we liable to taking care of that machinery the right way even now, since it was supposed to have been done? Or is every avenue been chased there? Is this, or I'll ask our expert in-house, is that a standard practice in, in the, in a loader?
Well, in my experience, they, they've gone pretty well above and beyond in coming back with this particular offer. It seems to be extending that, in my opinion. $15 an hour for nearly 200 horsepower wheel loaders is phenomenal. I sincerely doubt that we'll even come anywhere close to that with any other way to get us a operational machine. In regards to the warranty, they always make that a limited warranty that's, you know, in effect for the machine for a period of time. The new one, for instance, we're talking about three years. I believe we're still within the warranty on the, or 12, so are we, we just, just about out of that warranty now?
Mm-hmm.
We're probably still covered under that warranty. Unfortunately, sometimes there are just things that cannot be fixed. I've peeked my head in on this unit a time or two and it's a, it's a problem.
What's going to happen to this old one? Is it going to be junked? Somebody gets this now.
That's what they've advised us, that they'll put it on the lot and sell it to somebody else.
So somebody will get it and love it too, Jerry.
Okay.
It won't be ours.
Yeah, somebody will get it and love it, I imagine.
On this kind of equipment, Clay, do they have a transmission cooler? Is there a radiator that sits inside that transmission?
Very likely. It's probably not internal to the transmission, it's probably external in the engine compartment.
Because generally, when I think of oil foaming and shifting irregular, oil foaming to me tells me there's water getting in there.
Air typically.
And air, but, to me, it looks like something that could have been fixed, but.
Should be able to.
But on the positive side, we made it through the winter and now we're going to have a fully warranted three-year piece of equipment that was otherwise going to be outside of warranty and all of the maintenance covered. And so it's kind of like ultimately, I kind of liken it a little bit to purchasing an extended warranty on a product that you already own, which warranty's gone out. It's kind of a little bit of an expensive warranty, but at the same time, we've also gotten use out of the product. The other concern is, is just any downtime that we might face if we keep messing with this and it's a pretty important piece of equipment to the city. So only so much time and effort probably you want to put forward that way. To specifically answer Councilman Tate's question a little further, you'd asked about the warranty extending. Say that issue's found and it's being worked on to be remedied but has not, typically that will carry past the warranty of the machine if there's an active case on the machine that's being worked on. An open R or work order, however you want to refer to it, where they've already got the problem identified and they're attempting to fix it, they're allowed to extend beyond as long as it was started before the end of the warranty.
Okay.
My concern is that they can't fix it out nothing.
How much did the original one cost?
It was just over $93,000.
What was the next closest bid, Randy? I can't recall.
The next closest?
This was on a machine that had hours on it, right?
This was a used machine?
Well.
It was a demo.
A demo, oh.
Yeah. We, it was 93, 445. And actually, the next machine that complied with the specifications was $130,900.
Okay. So we're getting a brand-new machine. Not a demo and not something that's used.
Right.
When are they going to deliver that then?
I think it's, it depends on where they get it from. They've indicated anywhere from 30 to 90 days.
30, 90 days out, okay.
Okay. All right. Well, then I need a motion for acceptance of the Titan Machinery offer to replace the Case 721F wheel loader at a cost of $21,315.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Tate?
Yeah.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
All right. Our final report is the bid opening Carroll Recreation Center minivan 2015. And Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. We had $20,000 budgeted in this year out of the general fund for a purchase of a new van. In the past, we've always purchased or received one of the police vehicles, the Crown Vics, as they were trading them in. That one we got probably four or five years ago and it's just at the point where it needed to be traded off. We haul a lot of equipment, a lot of different things between fields and doing different things. We just thought a van was more practical. And there are departments, I know you guys in Randy's department, the Parks Golf, when they go on conferences, they like to take the city car, so this will be a lot more convenient for them and a lot more comfortable. With that, we had a bid opening on May 15th, received two bids, one from Champion Ford of Carroll and Stu Hansen Dodge out of Urbendale. We use the state bid information, similar to what Jeff does a lot of times when he gets his vehicle. He helped me with this. And the two bids were exactly the same amount, $20,733. The only difference was the trade-in value. Champion Ford came over and looked at it and gave us $1,000. Stu Hansen, as far as we know, didn't come up and look at it and gave us $1,500. So the net difference was 500 with Stu Hansen Dodge. But with that being said, Champion Ford, the local company, by the time we would go down and get the new van, come back, do the trade-in, servicing with the Champion Ford, we take it out of Champion Ford here locally, it, it will be serviced by a Dodge, they're one of the Dodge dealerships and brought back here so we won't have to travel around to get the vehicle and it has maintenance. So with those two different items, my recommendation would be we go with Champion Ford for the bid of $19,733 for 2015 Dodge Caravan, Grand Caravan.
Okay.
You're going to start doing the bids for the police cars now too then?
Sure, sure.
Any other questions for Jack on this? I think the move to a van makes a lot of sense with all the soccer balls and everything else I see him piling in and out when they run out to the fields and that kind of thing. So that makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, but more so than a car.
Okay. Well, then I would look for a motion to approve the bid for the local dealership of Champion Ford for the final bid price of $19,733 for a 2015 Dodge Grand Caravan.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second. Fleischer?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you. I trust everyone has read the monthly activity reports. The mayor would just like to once again thank the American Legion and their organizers for their planning of our Memorial Day Parade and services in the park. It was once again very well attended, very well done, and the flags in the cemetery looked great. The Carroll merchants are playing the Clorinda A's on June 5th at 7:05 and tickets are on sale through the Carroll Rotary for just $5. I hope everybody will take an opportunity to get out. I hope everybody will take an opportunity to get out, watch a good baseball game, and welcome semi-pro baseball back to Carroll. The Carroll Young Professionals are continuing to wrap up plans and details for our third annual Carroll Fest event. Just a reminder, that is on August eighth. I want to thank all those local supporters and businesses, and encourage everyone to sign up for an event or to volunteer. We hope to have an even bigger turnout this year. The Carroll Aquatic Center, Carroll Aquatic Center is open, of course, weather permitting. And as a reminder, Jack, those hours, times, and what temperature?
Sure. Carroll Aquatic Center is open one to seven. Generally, if the temperature is below seventy-four, we look at, you know, whether we're going to open or not. If it's below seventy, generally, we will not open. But between seventy and seventy-four, if the sun's out, looks like temperature may be rising, we'll probably open. Really, seventy and below is not a very comfortable condition to be out at the pool. Tendons will be low. We have, I mean, there's a lot of variables that we look into. We've had six, a lot of days where it's been closed, seventy degree, we'll probably open for a few hours, you know, try to accommodate, you know, some of the members and that, make sure they get enough days used. But we look between seventy and seventy-four is kind of where we decide.
And it's one to seven, Monday through Sunday?
Yes.
And if anybody has any questions as to whether it's open or not, just call down to the rec center?
Rec center, or, yeah, call rec center. So, and summer hours for the indoor pool, generally throughout the year, we're open six to seven thirty a.m. We have good crowd that comes in, uses the pool at that time. And then it's eleven to one thirty, and then three forty-five to eight forty-five. During the summer, because we want to try to encourage people to be at the outdoor pool, the attendance is a lot lower, and we do have morning swim team. Our swim team practices from nine to noon. So we go, again, six to seven thirty, and then noon to two in the afternoon, instead of eleven to one thirty, noon to two, and from noon to one, we just allow adults swim. So the adults get to do lap swim, water walking, whatever they want, they have access to the pool to themselves. And then one to two, it's open to the public, if people want to come down for, with their kids for a short hour. And then we're doing something a little bit different, we're going four to eight o'clock. So I give people time after work to come down and use the pool there also, instead of three forty-five to eight forty-five. So we're losing an hour of time.
Lifeguards?
Lifeguards? We've been getting people more interested now that it's out that, you know, we're at nine dollars an hour instead of eight. We're going to hold a class in the next two weeks. We have ten people interested in that, and that will really help our numbers. I brought kind of a schedule that we have. Basically, we need twelve guards in one day. And that's if they work, you know, long shifts. And with the Country Club, Glidden, Rita, Coon Rapids, there's a lot of need for guards. So with these additional ten, hopefully, they'll, you know, work majority for us, but it could help other locations, too.
How old do you have to be for a lifeguard?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
And the only thing with a fifteen-year-old lifeguard that they can't do is, at the Aquatic Center, they can not go up the, and go up the stairs to the slide, but they're able to do everything on the deck. And during the winter, it's, if you're under sixteen, you can only work until seven o'clock at night, so we usually run a three forty-five to six thirty shift, so we can try to get those fifteen-year-olds some hours.
Okay. Very good. I just thought this would be a great opportunity for you to provide us an update. I drove by the Aquatic Center as you were out there firing up the slide and everything, and.
Yesterday.
Yep.
Be a good day tomorrow. It looks sunny and eighty, so.
Very good.
At least last time I went.
All right. Final announcement, with all the kids out of school on summer break and the large amount of construction that we'll have going on over the summer, just a safety note, to please be on the lookout for walkers, bikers, and runners. I'd also encourage our walkers and bikers to please use the sidewalk whenever possible rather than the street. Finally, I want to also send a big thank you and congratulations out to the Carroll County Wellness Group and rec center on what appeared to be a very well-attended kids' triathlon on Saturday.
We had right about seventy participants down from last year, I think we had a hundred and one last year. But I'd like to thank the Carroll Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. They were out on Grant Road blocking traffic, so the kids that rode their bike out on the Grant Road, it was safe for them. And Captain led the, led the charge, he got out in front of them, so they followed him. Appreciate that.
Very good. All right. I don't have any other comments. Any other comments from council members tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Potts?
Yes.
Tate?